Wonderful. I will call to order the April 2nd Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Sala Houdin, Councilmembers Forsyth, Kritzer, Nueva Camina, and myself, Presiding Officer, Councilmember Stewart. I will introduce additional council members as they arrive. We have seven items on our agenda today, nearly all of which are with our Public Works team, and we're going to start off with the adoption of the Construction and Demolition Debris and Recycling Reuse Ordinance. And before we begin, I just wanted to acknowledge that we've set this item up a little bit differently than we typically do for other committee meetings. We are going to have a full briefing and a full presentation on this item. This is a bigger item, and scheduling is a little bit tight for the council in the coming months, so we're going to take a little bit of extra time. In addition to the materials in the packet today, council also received the memos from the last couple of council touchpoints via email from Erin, which we really appreciated. This is an item that has a lot of opportunity for impact, and our touch bases on it are just a little bit far between, so we just want to make sure that everyone on council had a chance to catch up on that. We have about 20 minutes scheduled for this item because it is a full briefing, and if we complete our review and we're ready to go, we'll go ahead and move this forward to consent. If we are not there and we need more time, we will deal with that as it comes up and continue on with the rest of our agenda. So thank you for your patience and engagement, council, on this item, and we'll go ahead and kick it off with Erin and Mica. Thanks for being here.
All right. Good afternoon, council members. It's great to be here today, and thank you for allowing the presentation. We really appreciate that. I'm Erin Mulver, Environmental Programs' Manager in Public Works, and alongside me is Mica Bonkowski, Solid Waste and Sustainability Program Administrator. So we're here today to provide an overview on the Construction and Demolition Debris Recycling and Reuse Ordinance. So although the path to creating this ordinance has taken longer than we initially expected, the result is something I'm really proud of, as Redmond will be one of the first cities in the region with an ordinance and program of this kind. Council was first introduced to the Construction and Demolition Debris Program as an ask in the 2122 biennial budget, followed by approval of a consultant contract to support ordinance development. We were back to provide an update to council in 2022 at the July Parks and Sustainability Committee of the Whole meeting, and we're here today asking for council approval of the ordinance at the April 16th Council Business Meeting. So Mica will provide an overview of the history around the ordinance development, how the ordinance will work, and benefits to the city, developers, and contractors. With that, Mica, take it away.
Thank you, Erin, and Happy Earth Month to everybody. Welcome to April. So as Erin said, today, we're here to explain why we recommend this ordinance, how the ordinance will work, what the benefits of the ordinance are, and how we develop the ordinance, and ask council to approve it. Let's see. So in 2020, council adopted the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan and included a goal to achieve a diversion rate of 70% of materials from the landfill. Why is this goal of 70% diversion rate important? So currently, 70% of the materials that are sent to the landfill are recyclable or compostable. Diversion of these valuable materials from the landfill returns them to the markets for recycling or composting and displaces the need for virgin materials. Additionally, the Cedar Hills landfill owned by King County, where all of our municipal solid waste goes, is set to be full in 2040, at which time King County and cities will need to find another disposal method for the approximately 800,000 tons of MSW sent to Cedar Hills annually. Redmond's current diversion rate is 43%, and right now, we only track the tonnage from city events such as our Ridwell collections, shredding events, and that's picked up by our city contracted hauler waste management. A few cities in the country also track construction and demolition waste. Construction demolition waste is the material generated from demolition projects and leftover materials from construction work, and currently in King County, five of those major materials are banned from landfill disposal at Cedar Hills because of volume and because they're highly recyclable. So clean wood, cardboard, metal, gypsum, and asphalt paving, bricks, and concrete, which is kind of one category. King County also requires all mixed CND and non-recyclable CND waste to go to a designated CND recovery facility or transfer station, where they're sorted to recover materials of value that can be turned into new products. And any residual from that goes to a CND-certified landfill somewhere else in the state. Several California cities report achieving diversion rates over 70%, excuse me, 70%, and Redmond commissioned a consultant study in 2019 to research how they were achieving such a high rate, and they found that the main driver was the inclusion of CND recycled material in their diversion rates. So for the average city, about 40% of the material, of the total tonnage of waste in the city, comes from construction and demolition debris. So currently, the tonnage is only tracked by the county in total and is not segmented by city, so we aren't able to see how much is generated in Redmond. In order to be able to track this and support goals to increase recycling of valuable CND materials and encourage deconstruction, the city has drafted the ordinance that we bring to you today. So how it works, the ordinance will require qualifying construction and demolition projects that generate CND material to report that tonnage to the city, and this will be tied into their construction or demolition permit. Currently, through King County code, this material is already going to those designated CND material recovery facilities, and when they drop it off at those facilities, it generates a weight ticket that will in turn be submitted to the city as a permit requirement. We're currently evaluating a cloud-based software platform called Green Halo to streamline this submission process, which will also streamline staff evaluation of the submitted reports. We are in discussion with DTG Recycle, which owns most of the designated King County CND facilities in the area, about implementing Green Halo at their scale houses, which would further streamline the process. Somebody with a Redmond demolition permit could show up at a DTG facility, give them the Redmond permit number, and it would automatically be uploaded to their permit. That hasn't happened yet. That's just something we hope will happen. The penalties for noncompliance will be the same as noncompliance for any other demo or construction permit issue. Sorry, my screen is a little weird. There we go. The ordinance also requires any demolition project to get what's called a salvage assessment before the demolition. This is a process where a King County-certified salvage verifier does a walkthrough of the building to be demoed, drafts a report of materials that could be pulled out before a demolition in order to maintain their value for reuse. Often pulling these materials out first will pay for the extra labor costs of deconstruction over a straight demolition. By getting a salvage report, the property has the information necessary to decide if deconstruction is a viable or even a preferred option to a straight demolition. Many demo companies already pull valuable materials out prior to knock down. It saves cost per ton at the designated CND facilities because source-separated materials, like if they pull large beams of wood out, can be taken straight somewhere else and sold at a profit rather than pay to take them to the designated facility per ton fee. For example, we did a salvage assessment walkthrough of the Motley Zoo building before it got knocked down, and the demo company was already pulling out the glue lamp beams that were in there for reuse somewhere else prior to demolition. Through collecting tonnage info from these projects and continuing our work with King County and Seattle, and assessing the emerging markets for the reused salvage materials, the city can make future recommendations to amend this ordinance to include a required diversion rate for projects in the city, and whether the data that we collect supports including a deconstruction requirement for certain building types. Several new initiatives in the region are already helping to build that market for reused materials. There's a grant from the EPA that Seattle got for a salvage lumber warehouse that just got released, and they're starting to work on that project, which would create a place for all that reused material to go and then be put together into lumber packages to be sold, for example. There are RE+ grants from King County that just did, I think, 20 deconstructions in the King County area last year, and Seattle also offers a grant program to projects that do deconstruction rather than demolition. So some of the benefits of this are the salvage assessment requirement and tonnage reporting will all be part of the permit checklist, and it will streamline the demo and construction permits and then provide that information to the city. For developers seeking LEED or ILFI certification of their projects, points are available for deconstruction and recycling, so tracking the tonnage can support their certification, and they'll be able to pull those reports from Green Halo after they've entered the information. And again, inclusion of this tonnage into our overall city diversion rate will go a long way to meeting our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan and County Comprehensive Plan goals. So the development process for this was very thorough and pretty long. To begin gathering information, to build on the 2019 study, the white paper that we did, researching CND ordinances in California and Washington, the city and a consultant conducted interviews with questionnaires that were tailored to particular industries. So we solicited input from developers, builders, environmental nonprofits, construction and demolition recyclers, deconstruction experts, and King County and Seattle staff, and that list is in the packet that we sent out along. This work yielded some key decision points that the city's staff stakeholder group had to work through to shape the ordinance to make sure that it would work best and serve Redmond. Much of the feedback and internal work of the staff work group involved deciding the method of enforcement or incentives to get compliance for the ordinance requirements, and a lot of that was evaluating the staff burden and cost versus return on investment of implementing, say, a deposit and return system tied to the permits or fines and penalties for noncompliance. And in the end, the most clear, easiest-to-implement solution was to use the structure already existing in the current permit system for noncompliance with demo and construction permits. It was also acknowledged that the main goal is to get the data from those contractors and not to punish them for noncompliance. Some other ordinances that we researched require a certain percentage of the material from a demolition to be recycled. In our interviews, we learned that recycling rates vary widely by designated CND facility and are largely out of the hands of the demo contractor or building contractor. And additionally, the city itself doesn't have regulatory authority over those recycling or construction and demolition designated facilities. There's only one that's in the city of Redmond, and the rest of them are managed by, or regulated by, King County. Interviews with the facilities, they acknowledge that the rates varied based on the type of materials they received. Cleaner source-separated materials have a higher percentage of material value, while mixed loads can be very low value, but they sort and divert what they can market out the other end. King County and Seattle, which do regulate those facilities, monitor each recycling rate and have looked at requiring diversion percent minimums for them to keep their designated facility status. For this reason, we didn't include a per-project diversion rate requirement in this ordinance, but remain open to an amendment in the future as the market for CND materials is improved, and we have more data on the current rates from the projects in Redmond. Additionally, in interviews with demo companies and one deconstruction company, they stated that a requirement to deconstruct buildings of a certain age wouldn't work well until the used lumber warehouse was up and running, which would create the market and the value for the wood that a deconstruction ordinance would create, because there would be a lot more wood on the market once that gets running. And again, as the market evolves, we can return to council with an amendment when this wood market is ready. Work with internal city stakeholders identified the best workflow to implement the ordinance provisions with the permit process for demo and construction permits. In addition, as I mentioned, we've started working with TIS to evaluate Green Halo for use in the city. It's already used in many cities in California, and King County has already contracted with Green Halo and would give us some of the services for the first year paid for by King County. In order to provide ample time for implementing the ordinance requirements, the effective date set in the language will be one year from the date of ordinance adoption. This will allow staff to create outreach materials to begin educating developers, contractors, demo companies, and designated CND facilities about the Redmond requirements, and to create materials for permit applicants outlining the process that would be handled by our permit center, so anybody coming in would have a checklist of how to work through the process. Throughout the development process of this ordinance, staff also collaborated closely with King County Solid Waste staff to ensure that our code would align with the King County code language, requiring where these materials go. And as we were developing our draft, the Regional Code Collaboration also finalized a code template for cities to use for construction and demolition debris recycling and reuse ordinances. The Regional Code Collaboration is a multi-jurisdictional group of planners and code officials from both within and outside of King County, and they work regularly to leverage their shared expertise to develop and update green codes. The city participates in the Regional Code Collaboration and has integrated some of their code, for example, in appendix that they've recommended in the past. Their expertise has also informed the development of the Green Building Incentive Program update that's currently underway. The draft from the Regional Code Collaboration had some great language sections that were much clearer than our original draft and achieved the same goals, so we incorporated much of that language into the code that we present today. And so the next step we're seeking is adoption of the ordinance at the April 16th Council Meeting on Consent. Let's see.
Yeah, we're open to any questions. And just one note, too, in your packet, you have an ordinance. It's not the ordinance that's formatted to the city standard, so we've yet to do that, but the language is the same. It actually reads a lot easier the way we have it, but just know that when you see it again, it will be formatted in the cities.
I appreciate that. Thank you both so much. And yeah, the color-coded headings in the ordinances, you know, actually, it is helpful in terms of wayfinding, so I do appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for this really thorough update on this big project. It's exciting to be here. We have been joined by Councilmember Anderson. Thank you so much. And I'll turn it over to the council now. Council President, Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Excited about this one. I know it's been a long time coming, so thank you for all the hard work. I did notice the ordinance as drafted has an 80% diversion rate, even though everything that we have ESAP-wise has 70%, so happy to go higher, but can you just speak to that, or if that's actually, is it a typo? Is it accurate?
I think the ESAP itself had a 70%, and then I think the council, what was it called? The Climate Action Emergency Declaration had an 80% goal.
Great.
I mean, we anticipate we'll be closer to 80, and it really depends on the success of the CND facilities, too, because they get all this material, and then, you know, of what they can successfully sort, they have a diversion rate there. So, you know, if we send them 100% good stuff and they report back that, you know, they're able to divert 70%, then we have to calculate that in when we look at our final diversion from projects.
But our goal is 80. Love that.
I mean, our goal is as high as we can get. Yeah, we're always fighting for that version.
And as an example, the senior center, when it was demolished, 70% of the material from that was recycled, so.
Fantastic. Awesome.
And actually, that was a good example of all projects are doing this already, because after the fact, we're like, hey, do you have the tonnage tickets from what was diverted? And the contractor did. So we're trying to really promote this as a benefit to developers and contractors, not as a burden. I mean, it's a little more record-keeping, but we're trying to put the tools in place to make it not a burden for them.
Wonderful. Thank you. I was interested on the, if we could add some clarity on the, in the denial section, it says 10 days, and just interested if we could add clarity, is that calendar days or business days, just so that folks are very clear what that parameter is for the appeals process? And then, if you could just briefly speak to the projects that are 200 square feet in size would have this applied to them, and why that size, and anything else you can just let us know about that.
So that's already in the city code as the, what you need if you're getting a building permit or a demo permit. It has to be over 200 square feet.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. So I understand us not having the requirements for a kind of percentage that needs to be in there, but, so I wanted to clarify on the salvage assessment. That is something that will be a requirement or will be an incentive?
So every demo permit will require a salvage assessment as part of the demo permit checklist, but they won't be required to do a deconstruction after the salvage assessment. So the salvage assessment at this point is just to provide education and information so that they can make an informed decision on whether there are enough materials of value in there to offset the cost of additional labor for doing a deconstruction.
Got it. And then, just first of all, I'm super excited about this. I think this is going to be really big in terms of our goals that are in our ESAP and being able to address a lot of our waste diversion goals. And I think having that first step of being able to actually just get the data, so then we can use that to take action, seems really smart to me. Glad to hear that we're coming up with a good platform to be able to do all that tracking and hopefully make it easy for those to report in. I am a little sad that we'd have to wait a whole year to get this started, but I'm curious, are there things we'll do for kind of to incentivize early adoption, like what you were just giving as the example of a project that's already happened, where we might be able to start getting the data if folks want to give it to us early, even though they won't be required?
Yeah, I mean, you can kind of look at that year as a training period for both city staff in a couple departments, Public Works and in Development Services, and also for developers and contractors. So it'll give us a chance. We will start early implementing to see how it goes and get projects that are willing to, you know, work with us on that before the one year. So, and that's where, like, we learned a lot, just plugging in the community center data into Green Halo already on how that works and like where there might be more education and outreach needed, because we were trying to figure out how to use it, right? And so looking at it from a new user, how would it work for a developer if they haven't been using it, that kind of thing. So we're developing fact sheets and things like that to go along with when we will be sitting in on, you know, demo permit meetings and development review meetings, providing that information to support the Development Services staff.
Sounds great. As soon as we can get that adoption going.
But I agree. I mean, it'd be great to get it rolling sooner, but we don't want to roll out something that doesn't work.
Yeah, that's really smart. Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you both for this. This is very exciting for me. About three lifetimes ago, I spent some time around in construction, and, you know, we would see the increasing of the reuse stores, and it was fabulous. And then when thinking about it on a larger scale, but how cost-prohibitive storage and things are, so hearing about the lumber warehouse that would be coming online as a result of this is really great. Of course, you had alluded, Mica, to education as being a piece of this. Have we already started conversations with developers and construction companies about why this is going to be necessary and why this is our goal?
Aside from the interviews that we did with the limited group that's listed in the packet, we haven't really done a lot of outreach around it and the why. I think regionally, it's a conversation that's starting to happen more and more. I just saw that Tacoma passed an ordinance to study a CND ordinance just, I think, last month. So I think the building community is becoming more aware of it. Reused stores, like you said, are starting to become more prevalent, so hopefully the conversation's out there, and then whatever education we can provide on top of that once we get rolling after adoption.
Well, while I am very hopeful of a lot of things, I don't tend to use it as a strategy, so making sure that we've got a communication plan going out and having those conversations more widespread, I think, would be incredible, so that it doesn't come across as yet another hurdle or some, another obstacle that we're making it more difficult to work with us in Redmond, when we're really trying to be collaborative and bring everybody to the table. My second is also around, kind of going back to the conversations of the reuse store. And I think about, in recent years, we've seen materials, building materials, cost of building materials just absolutely skyrocket. Have we taken a look at any preliminary numbers as what that would do to our micro, hyper-local market of building materials when we're able to repurpose them, and what kind of impact it would have here locally?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's more of a regional topic. That'll probably get studied along with the lumber reuse warehouse, so.
I'm excited and looking forward to seeing numbers at some point when we're along in it. Thank you so much.
Other questions? Councilmember Sala Houdin?
Thank you for this presentation. My question is around Green Halo itself as a software. Is this sort of the widely-used, you know, platform? I looked at their website a little bit, and it seems more California-centric. And have they, I know you mentioned this is sort of going to be novel for one of its, first of its kind in our region, but have you had good experience in the conversations? Are they used at all in Washington State? Any more insight into the process of getting to Green Halo?
As far as I know right now, King County has contracted with them and has started kind of exploring their use. I don't know of any other cities in Washington that are using it. It is definitely California-based to start with, and that's where they started, and that's also where there are more CND ordinances in existence. I think this will be the first city ordinance in King County. So, yeah, and I'm not sure about Portland, whether Portland uses Green Halo or not. They're the other large city that has a CND ordinance and a deconstruction requirement.
Yeah, and we met with them, I think, three times now, and our TIS group has met with them as well. It's cloud-based, so that's a good thing. As far as adaptability to permitting systems, that was a big question, because, you know, there's a chance that we change our permitting system from Intergroove to something else. They're pretty flexible. They've adapted to be able to interface with, I think, four or five, like the most common ones, and so we're not super worried about that. Yeah, and it's, once you get used to it, it's easy to use from an external standpoint. Once it's up and running, it'll be set up so that anyone in the community can kind of click on the Redmond Green Halo site and see our CND diversion as a whole. So I don't know if they'd be able to dive into individual projects, but they'd be able to see the whole for the year, which is pretty cool.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and hop in with my comments, and then we can do a quick round two if needed. I have a question, rather. So, and there's a couple ways to ask the question. Maybe I'll ask it this way. When you did the study of the California programs and saw that they were able to achieve 70% diversion, and then went ahead with working on a program for here in Redmond, was the intent to get more materials diverted or to count more of the materials that we already know are being diverted? Can you characterize that for the public?
So if you go way, way back, this started a few public works directors ago as a zero-waste plan was the idea. And when we were researching what is a zero-waste plan for a city, ultimately it came out to be CND, which we found in our work. So focusing on the CND really made sense in that aspect. What was the other part of your question?
So my question is, does the program actually get more materials diverted?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Or rather, allow us to count the materials already being diverted?
Both. So first and foremost...
Could you characterize to what degree?
Yeah, first and foremost, it's a way to capture what's already happening, right? Because this material can't go to the landfill right now. It's going somewhere else. And so simply by counting that, we'll be able to increase our city's diversion rate. We'll also be providing education and outreach to folks that aren't doing it right, like some of the smaller projects, like, you know, they can, it's easier to divert smaller amounts of CND material to the wrong place, right? The other big benefit I see to developers from this program is education on source separation of materials. They get charged less if they're bringing a container that's all wood versus mixed CND, so it's a way to save money on the project overall as well. So I think the answer is a bit of both, really.
Okay. Thank you. For my part, I am so grateful for the progress on this program, and I really appreciate the integration with the existing permitting process and the ability to continue to be not just a data-informed city, but a city that uses data to inform the stories of our city, and I just really appreciate your work on this. Councilmember Kritzer, did you have another comment?
I do. Just a quick question. You noted about incentives, and actually, I'll follow up on this last conversation in terms of the education that we do. Since there's the RE+ grants from King County, and as you mentioned, a lot of those who work here would actually be within their jurisdiction, will some of the education be on... be on that? And then second part of the question is, as we develop this program out, would we consider building out our own set of incentives and grant program for deconstruction?
I mean, that's a great question. As far as education on what grants are available, yeah, we plan to do that. We have talked about what we could do internally to incentivize it. So in the future, if council was, you know, thinking that's a great way to go, then we could look at it. Other, what's the other one? You told me today someone's incentivizing.
In Seattle.
In Seattle.
So Seattle has a $4,000 grant, and the deconstruction companies I talked to said that that would, that would net the difference in labor between deconstructing and demolishing a 1,000-square-foot or smaller house. So for them, that grant made their business model possible, essentially.
That's very.
That's where we would probably focus those grant opportunities, more on the deconstruction salvage side versus the actual just straight demolition side, because you're going to get more environmental benefit out of it.
Yeah, I mean, if we can make that investment, we get the large environmental benefit and be able to actually not just, as Councilmember Stroop put it, just track the, what's happening already, but incentivize different choices, I think that's, that would be really exciting.
Wonderful. We are at time on this item, so I'll go ahead and ask the question as we usually ask it. And if we don't proceed, then I'll ask a different question. But are there objections to this item going to consent on the 16th of April? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I would say no, but I am interested in the follow-up on the calendar day versus business day update to the language.
Absolutely. And we'll see it in the format, in our packet next time. And so that will go to consent. A year later, it would go into effect. So two years from now, the council is looking forward to hearing the first year of data. And I just wanted to flag that for the public, because I know I go back to old videos all the time on our discussions. This has been, two years or more already in the works and two more to go before we see the first big implementation data. So thank you so much for your steadfast work on this. We appreciate you both. Thanks.
Thank you for your support. You'll also see, you know, website updates and things like that, right? Our tools as we develop them, so you're not going to be out of the loop. Don't worry.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Awesome. I really appreciate that. We're going to move on, and thank you, team. You guys did awesome. I appreciate you. We're going to move on to item number two, which is approval of the final contract with Johansson Construction Company and to accept the construction at Northeast 40th Street Shared Use Path. This is the section between 156th Avenue Northeast and 163rd. And introducing the item, we have Deputy Director Vanji Garcia. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, councilmembers. So this item is to approve the final contract and accept construction of the, construction of the project of the Northeast 40th Street Shared Use Path Project. The final contract amount is $2,387,211.79, which is over the original contract amount. However, this project was funded by multiple grants, so this project still came in under budget. Staff is requesting that this item go to the April 16th consent agenda.
Thank you, Deputy Director Garcia. Are there questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I'm going to do my question as more of a comment. Excited to approve this, excited about the shared use path, and hoping to see the extension of this down to West Lake Sammamish on upcoming budget documents, because I know that back when we started this project, that was my concern, that it just kind of stopped at the Microsoft property and didn't connect to the other bike trails. So looking forward to that final section as soon as possible.
Would you like me to comment on that one? I believe that's a CFD-funded project, so.
Are there other questions from the council on the final contract or the acceptance of the construction? Wonderful. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, Deputy Director. I appreciate that. And you're sticking with us, right?
Yes, for a while.
For the next few. Okay. So item number three is approval of the final contract with Road Construction Northwest in the amount of $4,263,591 and to accept construction for the Water Pressure Reducing Valve Replacements Phase II Project. Also, the request for these items to go to consent on April 16th.
Yes, and if you don't, I'm not going to repeat, since you just said the contract amount, and we call them PRVs, Phase II. This one is also well under the anticipated budget, so yay. Then if we open to any questions on this project?
Are there questions from the council? Council President Kritzer?
Glad to see that this is coming under budget. My actual only question is just, will the fund, in terms of the funding sources, will it just be that we'll use less from the water CIP for this project and then go to others?
It'll go back into when we.
Great. We'll still use the ARPA funds for this project. Okay. Great. Thanks.
That was also the part of this story that I just wanted to flag for the public. We had the tremendous benefit over the last cycle of introducing subsidy dollars from the American Rescue Plan and the infrastructure projects. So this is a project that benefited from that. And when we get going on our budget later in the year, it will not be a year, a cycle full of subsidy, pandemic-related subsidies as it has been in the past. So really excited to see us, this in total was 6% of this particular project's budget, and really just a great use of those dollars, and we're grateful for them. Wonderful. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Great. We will have that next week then. Thank you. Next time.
There was great pictures in the attachments, if you noticed.
Yeah, there were. Great pictures. Yeah, thank you. The next item is approval of the Consultant Services Supplement III with Opsys Architecture LLP in the amount of $325,000 for total contract budget of $5,536,638 for the Redmond Senior and Community Center project.
The supplement is $325,000, and the additional costs are due to the extended construction duration and higher than estimated number of construction submittals. We talked about this project on February 20th, and so something to note is that you approved the budget for this contract already on February 20th. So this is just the contract, this is to approve the supplement for the contract. So staff is requesting that this item also go to consent on April 16th.
Yeah, thank you. And the supplement exceeds that threshold by which things typically come to this committee. Questions or comments from the council? Council President Kritzer?
Just a quick comment, which is that got to engage especially via the community stakeholders group in this project with Opsys Architecture. And I think they did a great job of engaging our community in the project and in the design. So just want to say, I appreciate that, even though obviously we wish that we wouldn't have to have done the additional budget increase.
Are there any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Wonderful. Thank you. We will have that one then. We are flying through. Great job, everybody. Item number five on our agenda tonight is approval of a consultant agreement with Miller Hayashi Architects PLLC in the amount of $108,281 for the Fire Station 17 Siding Replacement Project.
I just want to apologize. I didn't introduce again, Steve Gibbs is with me, who is sitting next to me, the acting manager for Capital Projects. So I forgot. I apologize.
And thank you for clarifying. We had three different working titles for you, for your current role right now in our packet, Steve, so I appreciate you clarifying that.
No.
Thank you.
That's a different project manager's filling out the memo, so I apologize again.
No worries.
So just to note that this project is designed and permitting should be complete by the end of the year, but construction will start in the spring of next year.
Okay. And we have been talking about Station 17 and the siding in this committee quite a bit. Are there questions on this item from the council? Any objection to this item going to consent on the 16th? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay. Item number six on our agenda tonight is to award the construction contract for the 10,000 Avondale Erosion, excuse me, Erosion Control Project.
So this one, in your packet, you had a blank contract because the current contract is out to bid. So staff opens bids on April 11th, and it is anticipated that construction contract will be in front of council on May 7th. So our request is for the item to go to consent on May 7th if the bids are within budget, and it'll go to new business if anything else happens.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Appreciate getting out ahead of it, but I'm not comfortable putting it on consent since we haven't seen it. So if we want to try new business so that we all have the opportunity to review it that way, ask questions, kind of like we do in this format, I'd be more comfortable with that. But, yeah.
And that's why I have to hear the reason why we did it this way is that we're under the kind of going in to protect the fish, Ben, if you want to ask. He's the expert in the construction methods of that.
I will say, the first time I learned a fish window was not a literal window. I was very disappointed, so.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yeah, so the timeline is, there are H piles in the wall, and so there's a significant lead time on those, and that's why we want to get out ahead of that as well as be set up for the fish window.
Okay. Other questions from the council? Council President Kritzer?
I would just flag that I think this is a really important project, both for the safety of that road and the potential erosion happening there. I've seen some of it when I was looking at it from the salmon perspective, and I will say it's also important for a really critical area of our salmon habitat, just to make sure that we're doing this, this project as soon as possible. So definitely in support.
Other questions from the council? Okay, so what, since we aren't prepared to go to consent on this one, we'll see it on new business when you have the contract. And sometimes in recent past, it's been helpful if you do have it, you know, earlier than when the council packet comes out and you want to give us a couple extra days to read it, feel free to send it along if you would like. Otherwise, we'll see it in the packet for new business as soon as you have it. Does that sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And that concludes our list of items with Public Works this evening. Thank you so much for all extending your workday to be with us. The last item on the agenda for today is the committee work plan for the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. The draft work plan was included in the packet, and council, we have about 15 minutes to take any comments or spot anything that might be missing or any other direction we want to take on this. So the floor is open. Council President Kritzer?
I just wanted to clarify for everyone, since there has been some questions about just committee work plans in the past, that Council Vice President Forsyth and I touched base with COO files. And I think all the committee work plans will be a one-year work plan, and we'll plan to renew next year with, so committee chairs for all committees can note that. And hopefully that helps to add a little bit of clarity, since I think there was questions of, if it's a two-year work plan, but we only see four quarters, how does that work? And if we also do budgeting at the end and there's a new work plan for the staff, what will that look like? So I think what we decided was that we'll just, oh, we'll plan next year at the beginning of the year to do new work plans. So thanks for the work on this.
Sure. Appreciate the clarity on that. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I was interested if Tree Code update is going to fall in this committee or if that's going to fall in Parks and Environmental Sustainability. Wasn't sure, because I think we've kind of seen it in both on occasion.
That's a great question. And Director Carol Helen of Planning and Community Development is with us online. Director Helen, do you have a thought on that?
Good evening. I actually can adapt to either. Right now, we are in the process of reviewing Kirkland's settlement with the master builders over their appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board. And much of that involved some actually permit streamlining requirements. So we are going to be consulting with Sound, with the master builders and bringing that back for review by the council. Probably not very many substantive changes to the code itself. We will do that in Q2, and we can accommodate it in either 2PW or, or the Environmental Committee of the Whole, Parks and Environmental Services as well. So let me know if you have a preference.
Does the council have a strong preference on that?
Probably wherever it fits best, time-wise.
Yeah, that's actually, that could be really helpful direction if, I'll say it once and then ask for, you know, the council's thoughts on this, but to have council, our schedules for the year are pretty full, so to have it fit in, in either committee, it could go here or the Environmental Committee where it fits best as it becomes available. Is that a pragmatic approach for the council?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm seeing some thumbs up, and I'm also getting a head nod from Chair Nueva Camina of the, of the other committee. Okay. Thank you, Carol. Appreciate that.
Great. Thank you for the direction.
One other question. I would love to see an update from our Public Works team on the leaf removal equipment that we got last year, hopefully maybe early this year, or, and knowing how much of that debris is actually able to be composted and how that equipment is working out for us.
Great. And joining us is planning, excuse me, Public Works Director Erin Burt. Thank you for drilling us.
It's only because I'm super excited. We have the equipment.
Yay.
It's in. We have the truck. We're calling it our pumpkin sucker.
Love it.
It's massive, and once we deploy that here this fall, we'll get you out there to see that, and we'll begin tracking that as well, so.
Fantastic.
It finally arrived, so.
Great.
We're looking forward to it.
Good to hear.
Yep.
Thank you.
So is that a request for a quick, like informational item, Q4 or Q1 even of '25, if it needs to be, in committee? Okay, Corey, I'll take that back to the directors. Are there other questions or concerns about this work plan? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. A little bit of grace, I'm not sure where the question should land, but when I had seen our tourism strategic plan adoption and wondering, are we starting conversations around looking to the future for World Cup, knowing that Light Rel is going to be running and how that's going to be impacting us as a city?
Sure. I'll let Director Helen get situated as she comes back. The council has taken on this work, and we also joined a partnership with neighboring cities last year. So Director Helen, you want to take that away?
Yes, thank you. We'll be asking and proposing some kind of a à la carte menu of things that we could do to support World Cup tourism outreach, and that will just come matriculate through the budget process this year in support of efforts that both, that we've heard from both the council and interest from the council and the mayor.
Great. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And with, thank you, Director Helen. Would that also be working along with economic development as well?
Yes. The Economic Development Division would be bringing that work forward, and they're the ones that are putting together kind of the menu of things that we could do to accomplish some tourism and economic development support. So it will be part of the Economic Development Strategic Plan and the Outcomes of Tourism Strategic Plan, but actions will be proposed to be funded as part of the budget if one-time dollars are needed.
Okay. Thank you so much for the clarity.
Mm-hmm.
Great. I will just go ahead and hop in to give a broad overview and maybe for the public who is not viewing this document in front of them. This committee is obviously going to continue to be very focused on Redmond 2050 through the end of the year. We will have neighborhood plans and things like that rolling into '25 as well. And then on the public work side of this committee, I'm really excited to see back the results of so many of the investments we made in our city in the last budget. There was a lot of, a lot of studies and just like housekeeping that had been, needed to be caught up on after the pandemic. So of course, we're going to see the results of the Fleet Study coming up. We're going to get going on the implementation of the Transportation Benefit District and a really cool conversation later in the quarter around our adaptive signaling and all of that. So many of the things that were invested in, in this budget cycle, we're going to come back to in the next couple of quarters. So thanks so much. Council President Kritzer?
Well, you gave us a little time. I thought of a few things. And one's a follow-up on Councilmember Nueva Camina's comment. I'm wondering, I don't see on here, but I might have missed it, an update on how the Tourism Promotion Authority that we established is going. I feel like. I feel like that could be really interesting to just know a little more about it. It's tied in some ways to our tourism strategic plan work, but since we, I think we just established that a year ago, it would be great to be able to hear, for example, how much revenue it's generated, what kinds of things it's going towards that, that specific revenue.
I can definitely check with the staff on that. And if it doesn't fit just because of 2050 on that side, maybe Q1 of '25, it could be lined up early.
Great. And then two other items that I thought of that, that could, we could consider for this agenda. One would be the council in our retreat had, had tasked a couple of council members to have some offline conversations with staff around bike ped as well as flexible transit planning. And after that kind of subcommittee meets with staff, it might be nice to be able to use some time in committee, maybe like Q3 or so, to share an update on how those conversations are going or any outcomes. I know there are a lot of transportation items, which is where they may show up, but just to be able to share from that group back with, with the council was an idea that I had if people want, probably wouldn't take a huge amount of time, but.
Yeah, happy to see that direction with all three of our subcommittees. And I think just by way of plugging into the existing process, we always know that agendas are developed about a week before. So being in touch with the chair to just schedule some time, obviously if that chair is not serving on the subcommittee, then just content and a title and how much time you need is great so we can keep the meeting in the open session. But yeah, I think that's great.
Great. And then last one that, that came to mind looking through this is I know that right now we're out with a survey to residents to understand a little more about how our parking policies are landing and it would be great to have a report back on that and any of the review that's been going on around parking policies. I don't see parking listed on here, but maybe it's already planned. So that would be a question on where we might see that come back to us.
Okay, I can follow up with staff on that one and let the council know. Thanks. Wonderful. Are we adopting these? I couldn't remember, Councilmember Salahuddin, if we sent yours to consent yet or if we're waiting for all of them. Council Vice President?
So in our earlier discussion, we talked about how these are for one year and then following up on that question, we're going to adopt them all at one time on consent.
Okay, so I'll take, I'll touch base with the staff on any potential edits. I will report back via email on, on the couple of items that were brought back here and then redistribute to the council. And we will adopt when we adopt, when we have those ready. Yes, Council President?
Yes, I would say if we want to, I know we did already look at one, so we can finalize that one or just send that one in, in the package. And then hopefully on our other two committees, we can see those this month. And then once we've seen all four, we'll just, we'll have them like first one of next month on consent to adopt.
Thank you. That is the conclusion of this agenda and we are now adjourned. Thank you.